Okay, so I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board Workshop. Although the public is certainly welcome, this is a workshop and so the discussion will pretty much basically be just us here to go over some of these items. So we'll talk a little bit about, if the agenda for tonight's meeting is, you know, general planning board perception with the public, time limits for some public comments at public hearings, land use errors at public hearings, and then a general discussion on where we stand on land use ordinance update. So I'll kind of start off, and I'd ask anybody just, you know, hop in any time they want. I'm going to talk a little bit about, you know, general planning board perception, and it really has nothing to do with the planning board specifically, right? So people know, planning board planners, first thing that's on people's mind when they get to do something like that is, ah, I gotta go to the damn planning board, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna beat me up, they're gonna... So we know that the perception is always, always negative, always on the, people are always on the defensive. They need to go to town halls, talk to the planner, and again, this isn't specific, this is just general, this happens everywhere, so, you know, nobody's gonna tell me what to do with my land, but I gotta go see the planner, and so, we really need to be cognizant of that when we're dealing with the public, because we know darn well that right off the bat, most of the people are edgy, they're, there are some that are real good, there are plenty that are real good, but there are others that, or a bunch that are kind of on that edge. So I think as a general rule, we need to be cognizant of that, we need to know that, and we need to kind of have our behaviors that we want to do what we can to help these people out. Businesses come to town, it's all a benefit for all of us, right? They follow the land use ordinance, if they follow, you know, all the rules, it's a benefit to all of us. So we've heard comments from various folks on, you know, it's very difficult to deal with. Some of it is brought on by, you know, them not showing up with all the right stuff, but still, you know, we just, we gotta kind of have that discussion on what's going on and making sure that, you know, everybody is on board with that. So, I don't know if anybody wants to add anything to that, or...
That is normal perception into any time when you want to change anything, but also too, it does not help when a applicant has been told, been told, followed along the way, led, or anything else, and then comes back unprepared and blames it on us.
I understand, and I agree, and I think there are things that we can do to help that. I think there are, you know, there are definitely certain things that have been talked about that we just need to, need to make sure we get done to help that situation out.
When they've been presented with all the information...
When they've been given a list of specifics, this is what you need to bring, and then they make the comment, "I'm not bringing it, it's too much, I shouldn't have to jump through those hoops." They're not our hoops, this is what the land use ordinance says and was voted on by town meeting.
Well, I mean, I think, and you've probably done that, but, you know, we've talked a little bit about, over the, over the years, some sort of checklist, some sort of, and if, if the comment should be that if this is not checked off, every single one of these are not checked off, you will not be put on an agenda. Plain and simple, I think, you know...
And I think that's where a lot of the problem becomes. We, we will have people come to us in a pre-application to find out what it is that they want to do, let the planning board know, we can let them know what is involved, what they need to do, and then they go away, and we don't hear from them again for a long time. I don't know how to handle that situation, because there's, you know, we've had a meeting, said, "Bring us all of this stuff, we'll put you on the agenda," and they don't show up, and we hear that they've complained to the selectmen about the fact that we're not doing anything. Well, what are we supposed to do? You have a checklist, you have the ordinance, you have everything that you're supposed to burden, how do, how do you handle that situation? Because they don't, they don't come back to us.
I don't know if we've heard, we've heard anything on that type of situation where somebody has come in and said...
We had somebody rewrite the, a section of the ordinance, because they didn't like what we said when they came in, and the next time they showed up was at a town meeting.
And that's their, right, that's their prerogative, right? I mean, they, they can do that, right? Our system allows them to do that. So if somebody wants to petition and wants to go ahead and do that...
They can, and I'm, I'm not saying that they can't, I'm saying that's, that perception ends up creating issues for the planning board.
And I, I think, Rich, there was a probably a...
There were handful, very small...
Right, a small, very small amount of what goes on, right? You got, you got a handful of folks that will come here, they'll ask you for something, you'll give them a list, they'll go away, they'll think you're being unreasonable, or they'll just say, "Yeah, no, it's too much, we're not gonna do it," and then they come back again, and they come back again. So I think there's probably a small, small percentage of what goes on.
But I think most of what you hear is from a small percentage of people. Especially in terms of, you know, do they have an application in front of us? Maybe yes, maybe no, but the vast majority of, of the complaints that we hear about through the grapevine is very small in terms of the overall amount of work that gets done.
I think that since, with the few meetings that I've sat in on, I think I agree with that, that, that when you look at the agenda and the businesses that they're going through on the agenda, that yes, that the complaints that we hear are, are small compared to what they do. But that, again, that perception is all it takes, and, and I know I was always told that perception is reality, and that perception is all it takes to, for that one person who was not happy is going to tell...
Stir the pot.
...ten people that they're not happy, where that one person who is happy walks out of here and tells nobody.
Yeah, and I, again, I think you're right, and a lot of people, you know, they may sit back and say, "Oh yeah, you know, we appreciate everything that the planning board does," but I don't think a lot of people really know everything that the planning board does, okay? And how much time and effort, and, and I wanted to preempt this by stating that, that I personally, you know, being a planning board member for nine years, I know, and you guys are even deeper into it now, of what you go through, and it is a lot of work, a lot, lot time consuming, and it's not something that happens just like that, right? And, you know, certainly appreciative of that, and what we want to do is try to, you know, make it so that it's easier for everybody, and we want to be business friendly, right? We all, we want businesses to come in here, we don't want people to come in and say, "Single out the Arundel Planning Board," and they're gonna say, "Planning Board, that's fine," but, you know, if somebody comes up and says, "You know, the Arundel Planning Board stinks, Bitterford is good, Kenabunk is..." We don't want that. Again, like I said, we know that planning board is a general rule, people just don't like coming to the planning board, but I think the key is to make sure to, you know, if we can develop some sort of checklist or what have you, and if they don't follow that, then they don't go on the agenda.
Well, as a former planning board member, you know, we have a checklist, we have an application, and it has things on there that are required, things that can be waived if, if you ask for it and you can give us a good reason to waive them.
It's the same...
That, that checklist is there.
But if, if that's the case, which I really as, they shouldn't be put on the agenda until they've met all of those things.
Unless they're doing pre-applications.
That's the biggest problem, they don't want to fill out all of those things. Because I, I have told, I directed the town planner, until that stuff is done, we're not putting them on the agenda, we need a completed application, and they just don't like to hear it.
Yeah.
And I've only been on the board a little less than a year, but if you look at the number of permits we've approved as opposed to those that have been denied, and the amount of handholding that the planning board has done to get certain big projects through, to help people, you know, know exactly what they need to get, and even finding, helping them find resources so that they can get their questions answered and approved, I mean, there have been several big ones on Route One that might not have happened if they didn't have a planning board that was trying to encourage, you know, business development that's going to benefit the community. And so I think if you look at the sheer numbers, I think you'll see that very few have been denied, and many, many have been approved. And a lot of times, what happens is people come to the meetings and they complain, but they haven't been to the other meetings, so they haven't, they don't know what transpired before, and they're complaining about our behavior because they don't really know what went before it, and so once you tell them, or you try to explain to them what we did in terms of informing people, or telling them what they need to bring to the next meeting, or to get their permit approved, then sometimes they walk away and they're satisfied or, you know, placated. But the truth is, you know, the majority of people who come through legitimately and have permits, we helped them as much as, at least in my experience, in the short time I've been on the board, we've really tried to help them make it happen. And so I'm not sure where all the complaints are coming from, but it's, it must be a select few, you know, honey, I'm good.
It, it certainly is a handful of folks, some of them is because they've been zeroed in on a certain piece of the ordinance, you know, and that has spawned some other stuff, but as a selectman, we've heard things, you know, over, over the years, different, different times, and I just felt it was a good thing, time to sit down together and talk about it.
No, I don't think talking is always, you know...
Make sure that we're on the right track here.
You know, there is another situation here, which we've been dealing with and we haven't been dealing with, was old landmines which had been approved by the selectmen along the way, try to remedy it, try to get legal counsel on it, and turn out, legal counsel hasn't gotten back on it, and this goes back all the way to like last fall or something other, and then we're told it's all our fault.
What's the situation?
Black Dog Road.
What's that?
Black Dog Road.
I don't know what you're talking about. Yeah, I don't know what the issue is.
Is there a disconnect there? I mean, is the...
It's a four-unit subdivision, they want to make it five, they don't have enough land to be able to do it. They have, it's in, it's in a two-acre zone, they have eight acres of land, which is enough for four units.
Yeah.
They want, they want to amend the original subdivision, which is 20-plus years old, and add another, another house.
But what's that got to do with the selectmen?
It doesn't sound like you guys have heard anything about that.
Nothing.
And that's just sort of disappeared anyway, I mean, it's...
The town manager was aware of it, because I discussed it with him.
I thought he said, he spoke to the selectmen.
You know, I mean, we, you know...
Okay.
We expect him to do his job, so...
I'm just saying landmines.
Well, Rich talked about the fact that, that somebody had made an application and didn't like what was on there, and went and got it changed, and got it changed at a town meeting, and I think that you're talking about the doggy daycare. No, it wasn't that one.
That used to be, years ago.
Years ago, yes.
Yeah, and there's the list.
Yes, well, I understand that the reason that was done was because, and again, this may be different information, again, you're talking about a disconnect, because there was nothing in our ordinance, there was something in there about kennels, but this wasn't a kennel, it was a doggy daycare, and there was nothing in the ordinance about a doggy daycare, so she went and had, you know, whatever the information was that she had, brought it to the selectmen in the form of a petition, and then we have to act on that petition. And I think we only have a timeframe to act on that petition. I, I do know that she didn't go to an attorney to do that, and she didn't go to an engineer to do that, because she's trying to do everything herself, which I've told her is the worst thing she could do, she should have gone up and hired an engineer in the first place. But that was a case of hearing something from one person that, again, may have been that, I use that word disconnect, I don't know what she was getting when she talked to Tad, and I don't know what she was getting when she talked to you. I only heard that the reason she did that was because there was nothing in the ordinance that pertained to what she wanted to do.
There, there is, but it was in a commercial zone, it's not in a residential.
And, and that, and that may, again, be a case where if somebody comes before you and there is nothing in the ordinance, or whatever is in the ordinance is this much, and they only want to do this much, they may very well want to get it changed, and go out and...
And they're more than welcome to do that.
Yeah.
In, in this instance, this is a pending application, so I'm not sure how much we can talk about it.
But that, what we perceive, and what those people perceive, is the fact that, that they went out and did something like that on their own, so therefore, their name is not favorable with the planning board. And, I mean, I've been sitting in on those meetings, so I know that, that's not the case, but again, there's a disconnect, because that person may go to Tad, and we don't know what they're talking about with Tad, or what, what has been done there, and then they come before the planning board thinking they're fine, when really they're not. So I don't know whether Tad needs to record all of his meetings with these people to make sure that, that what he says is what they perceive and what they really think he said, or whether he needs to write, you know, write it right on their hand and make notes for them, but...
There are times I wish I had the time to do that.
Yeah.
Because I, I, I try to treat you like a resource, I'm a resource, and I solve a lot of problems people plan, and I have seasons, and what I need that people over and over again is to try to point me in the right direction, you know, and it's getting to the point where it's just trues up so much time in your life, for the times they just misunderstand what I just said, and go do it their, their own way, and they have to come down and say, "Look, just go get an engineer, get somebody who can professionally help you with this, and this is what you have to do, fill out the application, I'll respond to it instead of trying to help you fill it out."
All of you, I have said in our meetings, we bend over, trend backward, trying to help people figure out, how can you do what you want to do? The last example I can think of is the daycare that's up next to Phil on, on the other piece of property, they have to have, because of the size of the subdivision, they have to have two separate means of egress. So we suggested, Phil, get together, maybe there's some way, because Phil's got a commercial road going, and maybe there's some way that, that can be worked out. There may not be, we don't know, this is just, you know...
Yeah, I heard that, yes, and I was there at that meeting, yeah.
Well, I mean, we posed several scenarios.
We did.
That, I mean, that may not be quick fixes, but that could ultimately make it, you know, make it viable.
Because we don't want to tell the business, "No, you can't do it."
Right.
If we could get something to be worked out, we're more than happy to work it out.
What does a business have to do if they want to open in Bitterford? Does Bitterford have a commercial development or, or commercial planning department or something?
They have an economic development.
They have an economic development.
Well, don't they have a planner as well?
They have a planner, but they're separate departments.
And their meetings are really short.
Yeah.
Because they're basically...
Really short.
They're giving a lot of authority, planners give a lot of authority, and so is the, you know, the whole thing. And then a lot of the industrial parks are pre-planned, they're, they're pre-approved, so you go in that lot, you buy that lot, you're pre-approved.
A planner has a, an assistant too, like a...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Does a lot of the labor and stuff.
The two largest projects in town were Kate's Butter and Arundel Cottages, without a, and, and Arundel Tool. Without a sufficient amount of handholding by the planning board, those businesses would very not be there today. We get a lot of hand...
I was here last week when you, or the last meeting, when you approved the addition for Arundel Tool, and it's already started.
I was on the planning board when the Arundel Cottages came, Kate's Butter came.
Kate's Butter, and yeah, we certainly did a lot of issues.
And the miniature golf? I mean, do you know how long that took with Tad and everybody trying to help them get it done, and how many meetings, and designers, I mean, we were all in, all of us trying to make it happen, so...
You know, I just, I just, I wanted to kind of put it out that there's a perception out there. We know, we know what you guys do, we may have our own perception, but I just, I think we want to obviously be cognizant of there's a perception out there, and, you know, you guys are doing the job to try to help, you know, that there's a few that are gonna come in here that are just not gonna get their stuff together, and, you know, we gotta kind of see what we can do to work with those folks.
So what, what in general would you guys say, you know, in an open discussion, is the level of support for the planning board from the selectmen? Well, if somebody comes to you and is complaining about something, I mean, what's your level of support to the planning board? Or is it more, do you just let them, you know, complain, hear them out, without any kind of reminder that there's processes to go through, there's agendas that need to be followed, you know, that, you know, there are things that are in place that, you know, from time to time may not be, you know, right, you know, what somebody really wants to hear, but that's the ordinance that you've got to follow, or there are ways to maybe change the ordinance, which I can't, I would say that every one of us at this table is open to changing an ordinance if it's, if it is a benefit. So I mean, I, you know, just...
I can tell you how I, I've handled it, you know, people have, have come to me and asked a question, or depending on what it is, we certainly can't make decisions for the, for the, for the planning board, but we've had folks that come and, and had had questions on, well, how come this isn't, you're having a public hearing, how come the material isn't available? You know, why, you know, there's a mistake here, there's a mistake here, or, or, you know, they've asked certain questions, and I replied back saying, I mean, their route is, if they don't get nothing to you, their route is to come to the selectmen.
True.
Okay, and I've taken it back to Tad and Keith and said, "Here's the information that I'm getting," because I don't know the background, "Give me the background, I filtered everything through Keith, Keith will go out and he'll ask, and he'll get the information, and I'll reply back." And there are times when I replied, said, "Listen, this is something that you need to bring to the planning board, you know, and talk to the planning board about, and go from there." And I have mentioned at times, if there's a, an ordinance issue, there's a process to go change the ordinance, and usually Keith heads that off before I do. I don't know about, about the rest of you guys, and you've had comments, but that's kind of, as of recently, that's kind of how I've handled it. I don't know if that answered your question or mine, but...
Question for you.
Listen, I, I don't have any problem with, with the planning board's been doing. People come to me and complain, I invite them to go to Kenny Bonport, Kenny Bon, Parsons Field, where I've been practicing, and I've spent months upon months getting simple, trying to get simple things done. I mean, that's the process, you know, everybody's got different, and if you go to a town without a planner, let me tell you, it is really difficult to get anything done, because nobody understands the ordinance, and there's nobody to explain it to them. And of course, they don't believe you because you're advocating for the applicant, so I don't have, I think, you know, quite frankly, we're here because of a, a problem that developed at a, a meeting where you were at, a public hearing, got extended beyond perhaps what it should have been, and some business didn't get done, and that's the complaint I think we were primarily hearing, and that's what generated this.
The other issue with the amount of time we put in, we go to 10:30 at night, and Janitor's calling us out, and I think we've gone quite a long ways to help all the applicants that were there.
Roger, I'm going to go to selectmen, because I don't want to work as hard as you guys do.
That's why I'm no longer there, and we'll talk about that too.
But that issue got resolved, because Keith told me that he went to the RSU and said, "Sometimes the planning board has to stay later," so the, the janitor, we've got the keys to the kingdom now, and the janitor can leave.
Oh, that makes...
Because we, we've worked on it, yeah.
Yeah, a question for you, if these things have come up to the selectmen as questions or answers, which you have discussed, or anything else along the way, if there's a problem, okay? We as members of the planning board don't know about. Second of all, it's not reflected in any of your minutes, so that we can read to see if there is a problem.
Well, that's why, that's why...
No, I'm saying, in the selectmen's meeting, if you read the selectmen's meeting, it's so simple a thing, it doesn't tell us anything that's going on.
Robert's rules. They're according to Bob's Rules of Order.
Well, if, if someone comes to me with a problem, I take it to Keith, because that's, that's our chain of command, I take it to Keith, and then, then that's it. Once I've given him the problem, either he takes it to Tad, or gets a hold of the person and, and tries to resolve it.
I realize that, but what I'm saying is, even in the selectmen's meeting, it's not mentioned that somebody had a comment in your minutes.
No, unless that person comes to the meeting.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, if they come to the meeting...
If they come to your meetings, it's not even posted.
There's a videotape of it. You know, our, our meetings are all videotaped, so if somebody comes to a meeting and says something incomplete, it's there, it's all there, it's all on videotape. So, you know, if, if somebody from the public is gonna talk about something, it's not in the minutes, because normally it's a comment that isn't listed on the agenda, so they'll say their piece, but, you know, we don't, we don't write minutes.
Well, let's put it this way.
We put it all on videotape.
All of us can't sit there, okay, and try to watch the, the videotape of every meeting to try to figure out what goes on. We've talked about that whole scenario for years and years, and I'm not trying to get into that tonight.
And Marty, I think, you know, part of that, this meeting is to kind of go over some of that stuff, that's why we're here, so that we can all share it together, so we can all get it on the tables, so we can all, you know, so it's not in a vacuum, trying to be as transparent as possible for that everybody knows what's going on. So I want to move on to the, we kind of talked a little bit about this, a public hearing, you know, the biggest thing, as Tom mentioned, that spawned some of this was what happened at a public hearing, and I think it's, it's mine, I'm not sure about the rest of the selectmen, but when we have a public hearing, and Rich, you did it at the last public hearing, and I certainly appreciate that, there's your limited timeframe to people to speak, because, you know, that public hearing just kind of, it went on, and, you know, we don't want to shut the public off, I know when I was, when I, first year that I was chair, we had somebody stand up at the, at one of our meetings, and he went, he went on and on and on and on, and, you know, I was, I didn't want to shut him off, because, you know, we have a, kind of have like a policy of letting the public talk as much as possible, but, you know, we should have said, "Hey, the individual is not here, we can schedule another meeting," and, you know, I, I feel, I screwed up bad about that, and I let it go, and we can't, right? We gotta, I, I think we need to set some certain time limits on public hearings.
I'm not working from the point of view of setting time limits, but I don't need you to tell me the same thing four times.
Yeah.
And once was enough.
Sure, sure.
Well, and I present a meeting question, and I would say there was, there was very little, what I would call protracted discussion by a single person, and if somebody was up there just trying to grandstand and delay, I would have been very clear with them to be concise and wrap up their comment, but I, I would say very little of that comment at that meeting was, was somebody just trying to, you know, take up 10, 15 minutes worth of time talking. It was a lot of back and forth, a lot of open dialogue, which I think as a planning board, we want to encourage. And, yeah, it got a little long, there was a, there was a couple of items in one of the public hearings that really got off topic, and I tried to, you know, quell that as much as possible, you know, you don't know what people are gonna say until they, you know, raise their hand and come out with it, but, you know, to politely say, "That's not up for, you know, that's not part of our ordinance change," or whatever, "We're gonna move along from that." It was, you know, it was, it was quite a large agenda that night, and, you know, and that being said, you know, we, I was probably pushing 10 o'clock when the public hearings were done, and we did, I think, you know, we had two, sort of in our defense, we had two applicants that were ready for approval, that I think the board did a great job trying to get through in order to, for them to, that to be their last meeting in front of us until they choose to come back again. until they choose to come back again. Now, the, the one that didn't get heard that night, there was gonna be, you know, as I mentioned at the last meeting, there was gonna be some substantial discussion around. And already being a half hour over the time limit that, you know, I understood we had with the school, you know, I saw and, you know, didn't think there was any way that we should start that conversation. So, I mean, yeah, we wanna set arbitrary time limits on people? I think that's, in my opinion, is a poor way to go in an effort to encourage public input.
But I think if you gotta, you know that you're gonna have a controversial topic and there's gonna be people there, I don't think you schedule a business meeting at the same time.
Well, perhaps.
I mean, you know, or either that or take care of the business that you can before you get into the public hearing. Cause people are there, you know, maybe businesses are on the line and wanna get open, et cetera, et cetera, so. But I thi- I think you need to, you know, be sensitive to that, so I mean, if it isn't controversial, you get a public hearing done in a half hour or forty-five minutes, great. But if you know it's gonna take three hours or more because of the topic, you may wanna consider, you know, setting that off and.
We actually did. The consensus was that public hearings are always front and center and we ought not change that. But if you guys think that would be a good idea and move public hearings in the back and usher through the businesses first under those particular circumstances?
My, my question, you end up listening to that. Either way, we do it. Either we have the, the public hearings first or we conduct the business first and do the public hearings after. We're gonna be accused of hiding stuff.
I'm just saying, if you got a topic that you know is gonna come in significant time, you gotta do something to.
But we, but we didn't, we didn't know.
You had to know that that was gonna be.
No.
No, actually.
Contractor yards?
No, it wasn't the contractor yards, it was the overlay zone.
Right.
And animal husbandry.
Oh, or that.
Versus hobby farm.
But, but the other thing is, only reason we had the public hearings, okay, because if we didn't have the public hearings, we couldn't have sent it to you.
Right.
Put it on the warrants.
I understand that.
I mean.
And, and that's where I was.
Yeah, our time sequence is pressured.
And for some reason, you know, the discussion for one of the applications had taken a long period of time. And the public hearings, say, didn't start until eight thirty and we hadn't gotten to one of those public hearings, then there's a potential that that item doesn't go on to the town meeting. Versus an applicant coming to the next meeting to do the same thing. And I've, I've been, I've, I've sat in an audience as a consultant, many public hearings. This is not a, an unrundled phenomenon that, that something happens.
Agreed, I'm just saying, we have to find a solution to that.
I get, I get, and I, and I think, and I think we're also, you know, we're gonna dwell a lot on a single topic instead of looking at the overall, you know, way that the planning board tends to operate and that's, that's not a, a very common occurrence.
We do.
That's agreed too, I mean, as I said, I think it's gonna be isolated instances where you're gonna get this, but I think you have to be sens- need to be sensitive.
But I think going forward, keep an eye on, on the rise of the solution to that. And that is that we are not, for the whole time Dan was on the board, for the whole time I've been on the board, we held all of our public hearings at the very end, just before the town warrant, you know. We're not doing that anymore. We're gonna hold, as soon as we finish working on an article, we're holding a public hearing. We're gonna move it along so that we don't end up with six or seven or eight items all at once. It's going to cost more money because we have to advertise all of those hearings. But the option, and, and it's a big problem to have all of those meetings at the very end. I can remember a couple of years where we had a public hearing and we had to pull letters because things came up and there wasn't enough time to make a change. So, you know, after having discussed it with Keith and I mentioned it to us, we're gonna start having these public hearings. Every time we finish something, as soon as we get it finished, we're gonna post it and have it so that when time comes up next year for town warrant, we're not gonna be swamped with a bunch of stuff that has to get done. And anything at the very end, we're gonna have opportunities to hear from the public and make the necessary changes.
Sounds like a decent idea.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think for a land use ordinance change, this is my personal feeling, I don't think that you should have a public hearing for the town warrant any later than March, in the March. That's it, that's the cutoff, because what happens is, what's been happening is you rush, you rush, you rush, then we make all kinds of mistakes. And remember that perception?
Mm-hmm.
Now we got mistakes and that just adds fuel to that perception. And we'll talk a little bit about that also, but you know, that's why I think we should stop at, for anything land use or, it should go any later than, than March.
Go last meeting of March for Frank.
Anything beyond that, you can have your public hearing, but it's not for land, not for a warrant item.
Right. At least for the June meeting.
Yeah. Some of the inconsistencies though, that have happened in this last year have to do with various language changes, definitions that are consistent and things like that. So, it would probably be, cause a lot of time in the last public meeting was spent on mistakes that people were finding inconsistencies in the land use ordinance. So, at some point, I think the town would probably need to bite the bullet and have it professionally redlined so that you could bring some of these inconsistencies in line with one another so we don't spend our time piecemeal trying to figure out what's missing here, what word is used in this ordinance, but you know, it's like between a permanent use or a conditionally use and you know, the definitions aren't necessarily consistent and things like that. So, people get upset and that's, that was at least a half an hour, at least a half an hour.
Some of that could be due to the fact that we were trying to hurry up and get it done for the, for the warrant, right? Remember, the land use ordinance is yours, not his.
No, it's ours.
It's ours.
It's ours.
It's yours, but.
Cause we don't, we don't solely promulgate.
I understand that, but it shouldn't be on Tad's responsibility to go and look for every single mistake. Everybody should need to know the ordinance and not ask, say, the question of, geez, where is that again in the ordinance? You know, it, it's understanding, we, like us, we don't know our ordinance verbatim, but you gotta be able to look at it and know where to go. And what I see, and I haven't attended a lot of planning board meetings, but I think the board relies a lot on Tad to go and make all these changes. And it really, whether you gotta do workshops or whatever you, like what happened with the, the street ordinance, you take your time and do it right and dig into it and go through the whole thing. When we rushed, we made mistakes, we made a ton of mistakes this last time. And again, I think it's because we're trying to rush to get it all done at the very last minute.
Well, I think there's two, I think there's two reasons that, that that is happening. One, yeah, because we had a bunch of stuff at, at the beginning of April that we, that we had public hearings on. When, when the, the, the road ordinance went through, there were, there were other things that went through along with planning board information. But we did get rushed at the very end and, and it created problems. But I think part of the other problem is the fact that the town planner doesn't have enough time. Between being on the roads committee and being on the sidewalk committee and dealing with the applications and helping the planning board with the ordinance, I don't, I don't think there's enough time.
And not having administrative assistance for some of them are menial. I mean, that's one of the worst things.
Like photocopy, it's been hours.
Delivering the ordinance to us, you know, that takes a bunch of time.
The other thing is too, like last meeting, one of the subjects was along the way of, of, I'm gonna use the word, fifteen thousand dollars, okay? It was either net or gross. We went round and round on that and then at the last meeting, all of a sudden, we, we were told that was too much or anything else. But we had originally got that information from the professional who told us last year in the same article. And then he was condemning us for doing it and we were, we got the information from him, who was the professional.
Yeah, that fifteen thousand dollars, a big bone of contention.
But that's what, the figure that we were presented, I mean, we were.
By the professional.
But we were turning around and trying to figure it out.
Misled, an alleged professional.
Anyway.
Let's be careful.
I've just.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
We'll discuss that piece, that, that will be on our agenda at our next meeting, so we will, we'll discuss that.
I'm just trying to clarify for us, I mean, we didn't pull it out of anywhere. And it was not our, our policy to classify it.
Have you had a lot of, of, I know, discussion, but negative comments about that amount?
We went.
The meaning that I was here, I wish.
Right, that's right.
It's not the amount, it's not the amount, it's the.
It is the.
Animo.
Right, it's animo.
Just, just, just to clarify that problem.
Implicit in that is you have to, you have to show, you prove that that, you've either reached that amount or greater. And what Linda Zook was saying last meeting is that nobody wants to give us their tax returns and we don't wanna see anybody's tax returns. So, there must be a non-monetary way.
Yes, way to do that.
To judge whether or not somebody is a commercial farm or not.
Because right now, right now, what it says is that if you have any kind of profit in work, so if you're selling eggs, you got, you got five chickens and you're selling those for eggs, you have to move our licenses, right?
Yeah, people do.
That's not what, that's not what, that's not what we wanna do?
Little stuff like that just needs to be changed.
Well, that's what we've been working on for, what, six months?
Yeah.
Six months working on that. And we, we were close to dealing with the other side, but we ran out of time. It's not like we were dawdling, we were having meetings with the complaint committee.
Yeah.
You know, exhausted, I mean, this board has been at it every single Thursday and the complaint committee's been along with us since January.
No, we started before that.
We started back in September. And so, you know, I mean, how much time went into it and it, and it's, so.
We haven't been dragging our feet.
We haven't been dragging our feet, but it's a very tough.
You've got to drag.
Then it's one of those things.
No, I didn't mean.
I know, I think we had a great idea for, for how to determine whether or not it was commercial or not, something to do with.
Check's ID number or something?
No, no.
No, no.
Management.
A, a nutrient plant or a management plant.
Yeah, that's how.
Something that she had.
It was nutrient management to qualify or not qualify and that's how that came about.
But if I remember correctly.
There was some loophole.
Always have to have that nutrient.
Yes, but the gentleman there said, take my name because if you're so small that, that the state says you don't need one, he says, I'll do it for you.
That's the first time he said that.
Yeah, well.
For two years.
Your ta- your tape was running.
All right, so I, I guess the, the gist of, of this is, we gotta do everything that we can to not present stuff, whether it be at a public hearing or even at a town meeting, we gotta do everything that we can to make sure that we're error free. Like we gotta deliver a quality product, you know, we gotta slow down, we gotta slow down. I think, you know, some of these mistakes were, it, it's easy to happen, it, it does happen with an ordinance as convoluted and screwed up as ours, but to me, we gotta take the time to make sure that we don't, cause we're, we're just adding fuel to the fire.
In defense of planning, if I can, I think the ordinance is a lot better than it was.
Oh, certainly is.
Oh, and it's a lot better than a lot of ordinance that you and I look at. It's, every time you amend an ordinance, you're gonna have inconsistencies, it's inherent in it.
You know, we, we have the same, Tom and I do this, our, our rules of sole procedure. You think if anything was gonna be on the mark, exact and without conflict throughout, it would be rules of court procedure, wrong. We could, we, Tom and I could probably find conflict in, in tonight, because that's how it is. And I think people got a little bit exercised about that, over exercised about it. We can continue to, we just, we should just work to continue to improve it and that's it.
By the way, I saw the board would consider putting aside some minutes for the planning board to have legal look at these things because we don't have, we don't examine our ordinance changes before they come to the public because we don't have a line at the front. So, I know that can be expensive, but if we can do it quickly, it's near its end or maybe it certainly helps. This is the first time I've ever dealt with an ordinance, which I don't have, I didn't have an attorney look at it, the last version. So, that, that's, I know it's an additional cost, but it does help to alleviate the burden, you know? And find any hidden landlines that we missed.
Right, and I'll tell you, counsel will miss them too.
Yeah, that's true.
That's true.
But you, you know, suppose you've been on the board for a while, you remember the landmine, right? You remember Bob Coon, right?
Yeah.
The reason Bob Coon was able to find those landmines is because he spent time looking at the ordinance and, you know, it's not an easy thing to say, but you know, we need to make sure that, you know, we're gonna go look for stuff in our ordinance, you know, you guys deal with it every, every week, so, you know.
Just, just, I mean, like your landmine, look how long it took us, okay? Between double check, redlining it, this, that and everything else to get the word village center out.
Yeah.
I'm just using that as an example.
But today's systems, what you have available to you electronically today, it's a lot easier to do than what it was back then.
Yeah.
Right, you got word processing, you know, it's easy to do that stuff today.
I realize that, you know, technology has come along the way. But the other thing is would be, it was mentioned last year or the year before last, okay? That all you selectmen have nice little tablet and turn on, everything else is right there and cut down on your paperwork or anything else. They were talking about for the planning board to have it. If you cut that down, you would turn on, cut down how much paper expense and everything else along the way just for planning more items.
So. All us selectmen do not. I bring my own personal, Velma brings her own personal, and that's it.
I don't own one.
Yeah.
And that's it. Phil doesn't bring one.
Under perception and was, under the perception, I'm wrong, okay? And how often do we get that? Okay, but I'm just saying.
And the only reason I bring my iPad is because I finally found out that when Keith sends us the agenda, that it comes up on my iPad and that I can just bring that and turn it on and I don't have to print out those thirty pages that he sends us.
That's why I bring mine, cause I don't want paper.
Yeah.
The only paper that I, that I want is the agenda and I keep that for my records, but.
I haven't had to buy a case of paper now for months and it was gone.
I won't, I won't.
There were several complaints about the fact that the information that Tad photocopies for the, the planning board is not available to the public to see before they get to the meeting. So, we're sitting there with a stack of papers and they, the public who is attending, who are attending these meetings, don't have access to that information. So, it only makes the meetings more protracted. And there's gotta be a way for us to, you know, electronically publish, you know, the matters before the planning board so that people can see whether or not they're interested in coming and what's gonna be discussed, so on and so forth. But I don't know what we have available to do that.
Honestly, when I look at that and I think, you've got, you've got the agenda, you've got an outline of what it is that we're going to be looking at. If you're not going to come to the meeting because we didn't publish a document this thick that we got from Acme Construction about what he wants to do, if that's your reason, you need to go find a life because you've got nothing else going for you.
I, I think.
We also can go downtown and look in the cloud.
In the planning board office. I've got the file, if you're willing, you can come and look at the drainage.
I think the key to Tad is when you, when you, for me anyways, is when you, when you state that we're having a public hearing, you know, it's going out that we're having a public hearing, anything that has to do with that public hearing, those documents need to be available. Right, and in some instances, they weren't, they weren't able to get to the documents, even I myself went and looked. We couldn't find the documents, couldn't find them online and to me, that, we, we shouldn't be doing that. If they're not ready to go and be posted, put on a website, then we shouldn't, we shouldn't be advertising for a public hearing.
But that gets back to having some clinical support, you know. It's, it's a lot of what he's receiving, got paper documents, going to scan them all in and post them into his website, it takes some time and work.
And most of that stuff is like land use ordinance provisions, which you already have. It just, it wasn't, I don't know why, but it just, it wasn't there, it wasn't available. And we were talking about, not this, this past public hearing, but the public hearing before, you were on an email traffic where individuals were trying to find information and it just wasn't there. You were on an email traffic where individuals were trying to find information and it just wasn't there. And it got late put in there and I put it, we shouldn't advertise for a public hearing until that information is in, that should be step one. I, you know, we're adding more fuel to the fire to our perception, probably every time we do this and we.
And I will take responsibility for it, because I have a family situation that interrupted me from that, that was my. But I think that's the only time that's ever happened, where we haven't had it until online.
It, it could be, I mean.
At the town clerk's, the town clerk's office had that at the time, just a newspaper article came out. And that was a long time situation.
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
And, and it could be, and, and again, it got highlighted, it got really addressed because, you know, we had some folks that are, you know, kind of watching over a certain section, it had to do with them, so rightly so, but I don't want to just not address it, you know? We gotta look at it, we gotta talk about it and it's, you know, if we do nothing, then, then the public is just gonna say, screw everybody.
In terms of posting a lot of this stuff, I think the, the agenda is, you know, I can't see putting the rest of this stuff up there, it's just. I have it in my files. Yeah? People come in all the time, so.
Yeah.
Everybody's opposed to it, or nobody's supporting it, they oughta come in and take a look.
So we, so let's remind them over and over again that it's available.
Well, it says it in the notice, it says if you have a question, whatever, read the documents and notice it's sent to the butters. Come in and then notice it's in the paper and notice it's also posted on the internet, says if you add, if you want to see the documents, come into the town planner's office, three of the hours, or call, or have an email, use the email address, and that's, that's what those notices all say. And then we also have the mail, the bulk mail that you, that we send out to subscribers.
Okay? You know, there's been some discussion on land use ordinance, um, updates, on, uh, you know, developing a different type of checklist or what have you. Where, where do we stand on, I know you guys are doing some updates, quite a bit on the land use ordinance. Just kind of let us know, you know, where you guys stand on it, how far along are we? I know that land use ordinance is always changing, but, you know, we were trying to make, a while back, we were trying to set, I thought, we were trying to set everything up so that if somebody comes into the office and says, I wanna put a house, I mean, I wanna put a subdivision in R two, you pull a packet and you give them that packet, it has everything it has to do. Are we still going on that route, have we changed or?
I talked with Keith about that.
Don't talk to us.
I, I talked with Keith about, about getting an ad hoc subcommittee to do exactly that, to work on what we wanna do. And, and the idea came from Donna DeKindery. Here's the R one district. And in that book, you're gonna have all of the general standards for the town and all of the standards for everything that can be done in the R one district. So that that's, it's, it's separate from the ordinance because all of the information came out of it. So here's R one, here's R two, here's the DB one. So whatever area you're moving into, you don't need to look through the ordinance and find out where all the information is. It's gonna be set aside in a booklet or in a PDF format that can be sent to the, to the applicant so that they can look at it and say, okay, what do I have to do? Included with that will be the checklist of everything that they're going to have to have to submission in order to be deemed complete by the planning board. That's the application.
So, so are, are you folks still working on creating an ordinance that is, um, zone specific? Because when I was in the planning board, that's what we were trying to do, that we had just started that. So you're still, so when somebody wants to do something in the, in the DB one, everything is right there. When they move to the DB one section, everything is right there, they don't have to look for landmines.
Well, and, and that's where the problem is right now, is because we have the general specifics for everything in town and then we have the DB one, which contains specific information just for the DB one. So we've gotta meld the two of them together so that here's a booklet that has all of the general, this, the sign that you're allowed, the lighting that you're allowed, if there's any kind of a design standard, all of that information coming from the general aspect of what is allowed in town, your driveways, how thick your roads have to be. Here's the DB one, we're gonna put all of that information together into one book. The, the, the business districts have a lot of that stuff and we were on the board when they did that. Residential districts and the, and the rural districts, that has not happened. So they're, they are lagging behind, there's a lot more work to be done on that. We just slugged it out to get the R one done, but we didn't come up with any design standards or anything like that yet.
And that was eight years ago.
No, not the R one, the business stuff, we did pretty quick, we banged that up. The residential district, I think we would have done more. Especially in R C.
Could we hire somebody to take the ordinance and go through every district and make a book? And then the planning board could make adjustments, they'd have a book for each district, as we just talked about. But the planning board probably doesn't have time to do all of that in a reasonable amount of time. If we'd hired somebody to get that done, then the planning board could probably look it, look through it, make, maybe make few changes and pass it through.
What you're doing, yeah, I mean, you, you could take each district and take all the sections from those.
From the whole ordinance.
So you're gonna be having all these, all these smaller ordinances, basically it's gonna be many of the same things that are already in the ordinance, so you're gonna take. So what you're talking about is, i- if I understand this, you, you'd have the district and then you'd have all the, all the conditional uses that are pertaining to that district, all those sections from nine will be assembled into that book. And all the same performance, the general performance standards are gonna be in that book. So these books are gonna be fairly thick, they're gonna be pretty, pretty thick. And then the procedures, if you have procedures for it, like ZVA for appealing or something, you're gonna have sort of all these really, really zoning matters. Uh, this could be pretty thick for it. I mean, you could try that, certainly. It's an assembly issue, normally anything else, of, of putting this together. I, I think, and then having it available, probably one in PDF forms, because we don't wanna have them hanging around.
I think the idea should be that, kind of, some of the stuff that Donna had put together is, you, you get a subcommittee together to kind of look and, and basically use some of that information, but figure out what's the best approach. And then they can present that approach to us and we can say, yeah, we gotta go fund it or, you know, we gotta put it to, whatever. But somebody needs to take a look at it, somebody that knows the ordinance, and then some other folks, you know, just maybe put a committee together, look at it and, hey, this is an easy thing to do, you know? I know that what Donna did didn't take very long, it was pretty quick. Um, but I think we oughta look at getting some folks together and look at it and, and then coming back to us and saying, and you guys, and say, this is what we suggest.
But that's, that's part of what this committee that I talked to Keith about, will, will be doing. I just told him, from a planning board point of view, I don't wanna get started on it until September, I'd like to have the summer off. Can't afford that. I can't afford, not if my wife wants to see me.
Well.
Subdecision, reg.
R two, R three, R four.
Uh, weren't we combining R three and R, or changing them together?
I think the complaint committee and the planning board, it, it better still, that's, has work to do. Because that's gotta be resolved before you do these books.
But that's, but that will, that will eliminate one chapter.
I mean, to sort of to your point, my, my concern with doing a packet that has a lot of verbiage for everything, it's just gonna be, you know, you're gonna have, really to, to make it concise enough, it's gonna be two thirds of the ordinance, just with some things parsed out. What I think would be a little more user friendly would be almost like a quick reference guide to the R one, to the DB two or whatever you're looking at. That would have references, some of the basic requirements with references to the ordinance that somebody would have to go and look at.
Yeah, that would work. You know, because the, the issue right now is people don't know where to go look in the ordinance.
Right.
So, I mean, if there was just a reference sheet for each one of the districts that said, look here, look here, look here, and here's the ordinance, that might work. You wanna join us on that committee?
I've got decisions to make too.
He's got a wife as well.
Well, yeah.
So do we all.
One of a former planning board member once said, this ordinance needs to be ten pages long. And we know that never happens, not in today's world, they can't that way, but.
It's in Dodge City.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Strap in.
Can I do this? No. Can I do this? No. Can I do this? No. And then I'll leave the time.
Lost, we got the lost, we got the lost.
But that's, that's, that's an option, you know, just, just to have a, an index of, of what you need in each one of the different areas.
And I think that should, that should be the charter of this, this, this ad hoc committee is go look, see what's there and come up with a, a couple of suggestions, whatever, you know, and then present it, you know, sit around tables and.
Do a, take a, take one zone, do a pilot of it, and then if, if that's palatable, then perhaps you, you look to go and use a, an outside party to do the rest of, of the zone, the ordinance.
We're, we're closer to being there than we ever have been. I think we, we do have each zone with, with the, uh, the unique issues of each zone that, that are all together. And then there'll always be like, like, all the performance standards and signs and, and driveway standards, all that stuff that, that we probably always need to be separate from, from the zone.
Yeah.
But we are, we are getting there, that's been, oh, it's been how many years we've been working towards that, but we're pretty close to it. That, that similar went down, I gave us, you just, it wasn't completely fleshed out, there's some, some areas missing, but.
That's your game.
There's no reason this, this committee couldn't put something like that together very quickly. I mean, we said, oh, there's somebody out there.
You know, we know the ordinances, you, you messed up all the time and continue to make.
Yeah, but if it, if it, this would be for the purpose of handing some, something to someone who comes in and says, I wanna, I wanna do this in the R three district. Here's the sheet with all of the references to the ordinance.
But what, you gotta remember that whatever we hand out, there's a maintenance associated with that, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So, you know.
Well, and, and, and if, if you make it too big and you miss something, then somebody's gonna say, whoa, what, it wasn't in what you gave me. Well, you know, yeah, but it was, it's in the ordinance, so you're sort of stuck with it.
Right, yeah, that, that's the maintenance piece of it, that, you know, we gotta be cognizant of and, and we wanna make something that is robust and easy to change and easy to.
Of course, the other way is just do the whole ordinance owners.
Peel and replace, huh?
Repeal and replace. That way you make sure that, and that's much easier to replace.
How about replace and repeal? Yeah. You repeal and, you repeal and replace and most people at town meeting are gonna say, oh, it's repealed, good, we're out of here.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We won't get to the second one. We voted to repeal it.
It's one, it's one article. Not two.
Not two articles.
I'll tell you, that was a, that's a common goal. You know, and, and I think that, although enticing as it is, I think, you know, unless you hire a third party, we're gonna be another, oh, five, six years in doing that.
You can do it quicker that way.
You can do it with a third party, it might not be that expensive to do it. I mean, I think it's worthwhile finding out what it would take, just so we, you know, don't dismiss it out of hand.
And you don't have as much discussion at the time.
And you're gonna call us on everything, you still have discussion.
Yeah, but I'm just not saying.
They're not gonna do it without a way.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, we, we, that, or both, sort of, the words won't be as politically correct.
Maybe that ad hoc committee should include a professional.
I think it could, yes. Because by doing a piecemeal, it also, uh, is the catalyst for a lot of the inconsistencies. And rather than taking it on as much as you can at once to revise, replace and redact.
But I think you gotta make, you gotta make decisions about the R, the residential.
Oh, yeah.
I agree.
That's gotta be done first.
I probably agree.
Then you can.
And that's, and that's, that's not as simple as it sounds. We thought it was gonna be simple, the R one, we thought we were gonna blow right through that, and that's, not so much that way, not so much. R two and R, certainly R C is gonna be the R's, not R four, R four's gonna be the R's. It's gonna be the hardest of the ones on the left, I think R one is probably the hardest to, to tackle. I thought it would be. Uh, R four will be the R's, because that's where half the town is and there's fifteen boroughs.
Yeah, I'm collecting ideas within the community.
Very, yeah, they're, they're, I mean, more conflicting all the time of what people expect from, from the district.
Um, so, you know, I think that, um, these kind of meetings, I think we should have these kind of meetings more often, just, you know, kind of roundtable discussions, you know, workshops between, uh, you know, because we kind of do work hand in hand here, so, you know, it's gonna be my suggestion here, and we've talked to Keith about this also. You know, we've mentioned it before, at least I know I have, and we're gonna do this, you know, a couple times a year. I'll go around the, around the table to see if anybody's got any other comments, anything they wanna add and throw in and, uh, kind of take it from there, so I'll, I'll start with.
No, you know.
Phil?
The only thing I got is, these folks behind us have taken their time to come here, maybe we should, if they have any comments, we should give them five to forty minutes to.
Okay?
If, if they have any comments, yeah.
If we have issues, I think the planning board would like to know what they are. Instead of saying that, that you've had problems or questions, so that we can address them. Instead of, okay, we got slapped, you guys did something wrong, what did we, you know?
Yeah, I don't think anybody's slapping anyone.
No, but you know what, you know how I'm saying, in the idea, if you had complaint, okay, what was the complaint, so that.
Well, I think that would work, suppose, you guys still have a representative that comes to the planning board on a regular basis?
Supposed to.
Supposed to. If that person came and said, hey, this came up, you know, if, wait until the end of the meeting and say, hey, this came up, thought you might like to know about it.
Do you have a public comment?
We do.
Yeah, we do it then?
Yeah. That's at the beginning of the meeting.
That's all right.
Yeah, it's like the second item on your agenda, but, and that's fine.
Does it even matter?
That's why. Well, we were, we were telling people in the audience at the last meeting, because they asked that question, that's what public comment is for. If it's not on the agenda, bring it up.
That's why we have public comment on all of our agendas.
We wanna know, because if you don't tell us, we're not gonna know.
We don't know.
Well, usually if I have a problem, I just take it to Keith and then I figured Keith is gonna go talk to Ted and then Ted's going to, uh, but maybe we have a little disconnect there, so maybe it's a case of coming to the meeting and, and when there's a public, public forum.
Yeah, because I've done the same thing, you know, it would come to me and I'd go on to Keith and, you know, I probably should have followed up and said, hey, you know, where did they go, did you talk to Ted, Ted, but, you know, it's a good suggestion and.
But I think we as. I think we as a select committee.
So you're gonna go to our meeting and authorize somebody to go to the planning board meeting and take it up with the.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, our meetings too, you can always have somebody from your committee that, that, uh, wants to come to every selectmen's meeting.
You'll probably not.
Yeah, thanks. But I do wanna talk in, in the selectmen's meetings about an ad hoc committee or a third party or even an ad hoc committee with a third party to help the committee, to work with the committee.
It is one of the things that I talked to Keith about and I told him, I sent him an email before the next meeting to make sure that we put it on the agenda. Something we'll probably talk about in the next one.
But I think you're going to get some, some pushback at town meeting about, all about the fifteen thousand dollars.
That's if it gets there.
Yeah.
It has to pass us first, right, we have, we have to prove that, and that hasn't approved by us yet.
I think it's in the.
It's on the warrant.
It's on the warrant.
Sorry, it's on the warrant.
Yeah, it's on the warrant. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's on the warrant.
But didn't, didn't we, we talked about that, that, because they were having a public hearing, we still have. We still have, even though it's on the warrant, we might be able to pull that out from the meeting.
You have to make a motion to the meeting to pass over that, if that's what you want to do. Or vote it down.
Yeah.
I mean, after two years, three years.
And that's, that's why I think...
Yeah.
Four months. The first time the plane came at the last minute.
Want to put it on? Want to put it on? Jamie, you got anything?
No.
I will say that in going to the meetings, when they're approving, you know, when you get your, your approval and you read all those, all the findings of fact, you read them one at a time and have everybody vote on them. Jamie reads them all and has every, I like Jamie's way of thinking.
It depends upon the, it's a conditional use. We have nine criteria that we have to vote on each one.
And you've got to do that independently, because I could, I could vote, I could vote no on one thing, and everybody else votes yes, and it passes. And then Rich could vote no on something else, and Roger on something else. And if you don't do it individually, you could deny an application that would have a majority for all the different independent, you know, noise and buffering and landscaping or whatever else that, that...
Well, the one I was at, when you were there, you just read them all.
Well, that's because it's a, it was a site plan.
Yeah, we do, we do, we do that without having to fill it on each one.
For purposes of appeal, you've got to do that.
You got to do it.
Right.
Right. Yeah, we learned a lesson on that, and that's why we started doing that.
We didn't do that here.
Oh, no. Both were approved. And then Dan would put it together, kind of like, oh, well, these are the findings of fact. Well, that's where we ran into a problem, because, you know, they'd get a transcript and they said, that's not what they said. They didn't say any of this stuff. They didn't vote on it individually, so that a lot of towns have gotten in trouble with this. And that's what I'll tell you that. We won't, we wouldn't prevail in cases involving that, these days.
Send it back to make you do it.
Yeah, they're making it do it. Which wastes a lot of money in town.
That's right. That's exactly right.
You got anything?
No.
Well, thank you for requesting the meeting. Disruptive.
Hope so. Ted?
Fine. I just wanted to say, I've been on the board, and I've been with Dan for 25 years, kind of a long time. This is a good group and a lot of the selecting, and we're all in the same team. We're, you know, I, I think working together like this is a good thing. I think overall, things going with very well, we remember some of the perception 15 years, 20 years ago.
A way worse.
And, and we worked hard at getting it right and to trying to give people time. And we may have gone a little bit overboard by allowing someone to go on and on, like, because we didn't want to shut people off. And maybe we have to find a better balance on that. But I think overall, we're always better to give them a voice, nothing wrong with that. But, but everybody, because I think we all treat people respectfully, fairly. We're all different opinions, we're not always on the same page. But, but I think we, we really help out a lot of the applicants, big and small, big and small. And I think we all appreciate that. And it's too bad that there's always going to be the fringe that, that sees it differently. But I think we're treating them as fairly as the ones that, that are happy, you know. But they, I've been on the other side of the, of the, of the table and got turned down years ago and... What a bunch of assholes. But I think that's the way it works.
Yeah.
Yeah, guess what? Not saying that, but I said it was... Our chiefs aren't showing.
No, it wasn't in this town, too.
Our chiefs are not showing.
But I think you're very, you're, you're more cognizant of the fact that when the applicants come to you, when they have their engineer with them, that they're paying by the hour, and they have their attorney with them, that they're paying by the hour, that, that you're trying to accommodate them soon enough so that they, they don't sit here for three hours and having to, looking at each other like we're having to pay these guys while we're sitting here.
But those are the ones that also have their ducks in a row.
Right.
Yes, they did. They did.
Some of the engineers don't mind sitting there.
No, I know. I've only seen one engineer. I don't think he minds.
But you can do, you know, as, when you have a meeting, you know, you can look at the audience, see it there, and nothing stops you from changing the order of the, of the agenda.
And we have that, we're doing that.
We've changed, rotated it around.
And sometimes, though, it can work against someone, because they, they're always next. I don't want to see it, you know. It's, it's really tough to find a balance. I think we're, we're in a high-growth period right now. And I think there's a lot of pressure, and we've, I've used the last couple of meetings, but, but, and the rest, there's a lot, there's a lot of nights we go on and they're trying to fit it all in, not just all the ordinance issues, but what else, the flush of applicants that we're getting. And that's going to cause friction.
It was 10 o'clock. We were told to get out of here by tag.
No, anymore. Now you can stay till 11:00. You can stay as long as you want. He has the key, yeah.
Yeah, there's an inverse relationship between, you know, attentiveness and hour.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just not to beat the death, but just, you ask for comment, and I just, just want to underscore it again. Whatever you guys can do to get something in the budget for administrative assistance for planning.
Go that down. It's going to be something that we'll have to discuss with the budget board.
Really will. You know, it'll allow us to squeeze the most out of our resource.
I think it'll, it'll be a better use of the resource. It's, it's a lot. When I hired somebody in my office to take over doing all of the paid for work, and paying them 20 bucks an hour was a whole lot better than hiring 50 hours charged. Their clients didn't like to find out that, you know, I got to make all this money. And give to somebody else and let them scan and do the paid for.
Delegate.
Huh?
Delegate, yeah.
Well, that's why I hired somebody, so I could delegate.
And somebody, Phil said something about the...
Yeah, so, you know, this is a workshop. It was something, you know, mostly for us, but I definitely want to be cognizant of the, the three folks that are here from, from the public. And I would, I would ask, if you got comments, I would also ask that you keep it short and sweet. And, and we'll go from there. So, anybody have a comment that they'd like to make?
In less than 30 seconds. I have long been an applicant, and people will testify to that, of boards and committees having joint meetings. I'm delighted that you did this, and thank you all for being here. Thank you for showing up, not too many people for what we're doing.
Let's go.
I think Jamie's idea of the quick reference guide is the best way to go, rather than reproducing the ordinance, if, if the, a subcommittee or a house committee starts interpreting the ordinance and comes up with something that, that purports to represent everything for R four, for example, but misses something that an applicant can point fingers. Besides taking a ton of time and everything else. So I, I think the idea of a quick reference guide, which includes the application, a process description, step by step, that was something that really struck me when I was chairman. I had a very good applicant, really well-prepared, came to the pre-application meeting, and after we did whatever we had to do, he, he said, what, what do, you know, what do I need to do now? And that shouldn't be a question he has to ask the planning board. That should be something that the answer is already there. So having a checklist, I know that, I believe that some of the applications are not up to date with the land use ordinance, because subsequent to that question for the applicant, I spoke with the town planner, and I believe the town planner told me that that particular application had not been updated since 2004.
I'm trying to place the incident. Was it the private way ordinance?
No. I think it was a conditional use for contract yard two.
Oh, yeah.
At, at any rate, just, just that. And the other thing I'm going to say is, is not particularly sweet. I'll be direct. When I was on the planning board, I did not feel that the Board of Selectmen supported the planning board. It felt very much like an adversarial relationship, particularly in 2018. And I think that the Board of Selectmen can do a lot more to support the planning board as opposed to undermining it specifically. And if the planning board goes through all the effort, it will gate, propose to change the land use ordinance. I think it's incumbent upon the Board of Selectmen, when they send it to town meeting, to either say, no, we don't recommend this, we think this is a bad idea, or to say, yes, we're behind the planning board on this, and be direct about that, rather than have the train wreck that we had at the June meeting in 2018.
Good. From my perspective, I certainly apologize if you feel that we undermine you, because I don't think that any of us selectmen undermine or want to undermine or lead that perception with the planning board. We want to make sure that we support each other. And I think I'm speaking for the whole board here, but, so if you feel that way, I certainly apologize on behalf of the selectmen. John, you got anything?
Just if I can be of any help, getting any documents, that type of thing posted to the internet, posted to the website. You've got my, my email address, you've got my phone number. Including just your routine posting of agendas and minutes and that kind of thing, it could save you some time. You know, just email and hold it to me, I'd be glad to take care of it.
Use that computer, you will.
We're going to have, I talked a little bit with Keith, but I'll be a little bit more specific when I talk to him again. With one of our agenda items. There was a big discussion at the last planning board meeting on how, you know, electronically we could put some stuff in. So we'll have a discussion at our selectmen meeting on that, see what we can do moving forward. Certainly, when the new town building gets built, the infrastructure will be a lot better there. You know, the IT infrastructure, a bunch of stuff that I think we're going to talk a little bit about. Certainly not going to get it resolved right off the bat, but we'll start addressing it. So any help could, we certainly appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Final, final thoughts is thank you, folks. You know, hopefully we can do this a little bit more. And, you know, again, I know how you guys work, I was there, and I certainly appreciate all of the help that you guys do, so.
Can I ask one question? Marty.
Yeah, where do I get that I cap?
The page top, second half.
Second period start.
What is the status on any of the, uh, bad projects that we've had with, in town meeting, uh, with the...
Lawsuits?
Lawsuits? And still operating businesses without giving us an attitude?
The only thing that I can say that I know of is...
That we know of?
It's still pending.
Okay.
Waiting another agency that is out of our hands, waiting another agency. It's a state of the mind.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Thank you all for speaking.
Thank you.